I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Fial.
Here.
Let me back here, Treasure Ground.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamofo.
Here.
Trustee Rich. All right. Uh, Trustee Tetter. And he should be here in about twenty minutes.
I, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm remote right now, but I will be there.
Uh, Belinda Billings.
Here.
Jase. David Hayward.
Here.
Uh, we got Belinda, Jason Borsone.
Here.
Brian Gally. Tom Pytow. Bill Scarborough.
Yep.
And Joe Suter.
Yep.
Okay. We can proceed. We have a quorum.
All right. Uh, the approval of the agenda.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda presented?
For, and all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, say it, motion carried. Our members and our individuals in the audience may make a statement coming forth about any recent or upcoming events. So we have that opportunity for anybody who would like to do that. No? Okay. So, public, as you know, public has five minutes to come up and talk if they have anything related that isn't on the agenda specifically. Do we have anybody in the public who would like to do that? If you do, please recognize, you recognize?
Uh, Norm Freshke, six, seven, one, nine, nine, Deer Lake Court. Um, what's the agenda? Is it the workshop between the two boards and the direction that the planning commission should be taking?
No. It is, it's more of a understanding of, yeah, how, there you go.
Yeah, that's what I thought, um, 'cause that's what I thought the, uh, point was to get the two boards to get together to, you know, properly align what the board is looking for the planning commission to do and how that relates to each other. And, um, I thought that was-
That's not what this one is.
That's a different meeting.
Not what this one is.
Different meeting, not this one.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'm at the right time to, to voice my, uh, point. Um, yeah, first of all, I want to thank the boards, uh, for putting their time and effort into the things and, uh, uh, 'cause it's your, your time and you choose to, uh, serve and make, uh, this township better. I also want to, you know, sort of, sort of report the SAM appointment to the Planning Committee Commission. He's the best, he knows the most, he's been on that, uh, commission for a long time. Um, so the one thing I did want to, uh, mention is, is that alignment, uh, we saw in the last big proper project that went through that red barn, is that it was quite off between what the board thought and what the planning commission, uh, actually approved. And, uh, uh, you know, we lost sight of the master plan, which I think is the right thing to follow, uh, 'cause that's what the residents had input in, that's what the boards had input in, that was approved. Everybody said, yep, that's the direction we, we want to go. The thing I didn't understand, if that's correct, is why would they approve any variance that is not an office building for that piece of land? That's what the master plan said, we want to put there, and if they come in, they say, hey, we need a wet, wetland variance, well, the answer is no. Incorporate it in your plans and make it happen, uh, to have the wet, wetlands there. Or if, um, uh, we want to have an office, then let's work with them a little bit more, 'cause that matches what our master plans are and where we want to go as the residents and the board have voted on. It's not about property ownership rights at that point. They bought that property knowing that there was a wetland. They bought that prop- property knowing that the master plan was to put offices there. That's how they purchased the land. So we have the right to say, no, that's what we're looking for, and your rights are below what the residents and what the boards want. So that's what I thought the, uh, meeting was about today, uh, but, uh, I still made my point, and I'm hoping that that takes place soon, that that gets aligned, uh, from the boards down to the planning commission. All right, thank you.
And Norm, any other public comments online? Nope? Okay. Public comments are closed. Agenda items, the study session, Open Meetings Act and Ethics Guide Presentation. Can I get a motion, please? Do we do a motion on this?
No.
No, okay. Um. So, at this point in time, we're just going to go through and we're going to get the ethics training and-
Well, we're, well, thank you, Supervisor Fial. Uh, for those that don't know me, I'm Dan Kelly, I'm the Township Attorney, I've been asked to go through this training. Uh, the township actually has, uh, a rather unique code of ethics that requires that we review this, which is a really good idea, to review the ethics, uh, following an election, and it's the main point itself, it's required. So, uh, appreciate everybody being here, um, and we can start this if, uh, once we get the PowerPoint up. I don't know if we're close or not.
Uh, one more minute.
Okay. The actual PowerPoint was in the board packet, so if anybody wants a copy of it or wants to, uh, find it later, it's in the board packet. Huh, that was interesting, I pulled up the agenda packet yesterday, uh, online, and the agenda was one page, cut very short, obviously cut short, and there was no stuff behind it.
Maybe you just looked at agenda and not packet?
No, I did both, I went to the agenda first, and when that looked funny, I said, well, maybe the agenda packet's better. And maybe it was just a quirk at the point in time I tried to do it, I don't know.
I saw the slideshow.
I saw it today, yeah.
Well, I mean, I did it on my iPad, maybe it was a function of my iPad.
There we go. Are we waiting for the presentation?
Yeah, I think it's real close.
It is.
Yeah, this was a good one, I, I seen this one before.
That's from back in the future.
What I do, you scroll the buttons, you know, got it?
Left or right there?
Sure. I guess I'll just stand up here.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, appreciate it, thanks. Okay, so from the, uh, packet, we basically start off with, um, a discussion of the Open Meetings Act, and, and this is just a preliminary discussion, I think most of you have some basic understanding, at least the ones that have sat on the board for a while, that under the Open Meetings Act here in the state of Michigan, all decisions are supposed to be made in an open and public meeting. Um, that's why this meeting here today, because we have a quorum of the board, needs to be posted, which it was, and a, and a quorum of the planning commission as well. It applies to both the planning commission as well as any board, including the township board. These are just the notice requirements, the location, um, the notice must include the location. Um, uh, no one can be excluded from the public meeting, so anybody that were to show up today has the right to come into the public meeting. The public can record and/or stream, videotape the meeting, and, uh, the rules may not be arbitrary or deny the public the right to comment, and that's why pretty much all of our agendas include a portion of, uh, public comment, if not once, at least twice in a public meeting. So, with regard to actual board members and what to avoid, uh, there's really two things about the Open Meetings Act. One is an actual violation of the Open Meetings Act, and the second is the appearance of a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The first thing that we have to understand is, uh, well, let me address something that a lot of board members and commission members don't really know, and, and that is, in the course of a meeting, you're not supposed to be communicating with any other board member that isn't, um, in public. And so what that means is, you're not supposed to lean over to your fellow commissioner or board member and whisper something. Again, that's technically a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So along those same lines, you're not supposed to be passing notes amongst your fellow board members, texting or emailing, communicating with board members. And it always has to do with matters that are of a public interest, uh, but I see it all the time amongst board members, they'll lean over, they'll say something about the particular matter that's being discussed, and that's actually a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you have something to say about a matter that's on the agenda, you're supposed to say it publicly in that meeting. So that's number one. The second thing is, is that the Open Meetings Act applies when there is a quorum of the board present. And so that's the basic reason for why we use subcommittees, which is less than a quorum. And a quorum of, of board or commission simply means one more than a majority. So if you have seven, that means four, if you have five, that means three, that's a quorum. Uh, you have to have a quorum present for the Open Meetings Act to apply, that's number one. Now, we can go into some of the, uh, you know, problems that board and commission members can get into, uh, and the, the biggest one is, uh, polling the board. Um, and so you get on the phone call, you have an issue, you want to find out what your other board members are thinking about that issue, and you start kind of as a roundtable of all of the board members to try to find out where, how they're going to vote on a particular issue. If the intent of that is to influence or gain the majority of the board to vote for the position that you want, that's actually a violation of the Open Meetings Act, you're not allowed to do that. If you do, yes, Paul.
And you're saying that's not where you've called everyone, but individual phone calls, one at a time, would be the same problem, right?
It's the same problem, right. If, if the intent is to garner support for a particular position, then that should be done in a public meeting, right? Now, if you're calling board members, and this is where it gets a little gray, if you're calling board members to find out about their perspective or the factual background, or maybe a board member has some personal experience or expertise, that would be fine, but a discussion about how we're going to resolve this at the following board meeting is an improper discussion.
Right.
Okay? And that goes to, and we'll get into that a little bit here, which is the, um, you know, what actually is deliberations? And deliberations are a discussion for the purposes of getting to a result on a matter of public interest. So that's the actual legal definition, if you will. So just a discussion amongst three, four, or a quorum of the board is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That goes to the issue of an appearance, right? Because when you have more than four board members present, the public could look at that as being, that's a bad, that's a bad look, that's a bad, you know, appearance. That in and of itself is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. What is a violation of the Open Meetings Act is to discuss something that is of a public interest at that particular point in time. Okay, so we'd have planning commission members here. If four of you were outside of a public meeting and discussing a potential project that was coming in front of the board, that is very likely a violation of the Open Meetings Act. All right? Um, and then let me go to the next slide here. So these are the basic exceptions. Um, I've kind of covered pretty much the first one, so social encounters, uh, conversations not involving public policy are not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And what falls into this kind, uh, category as well is like attending conferences. Uh, many times we'll have a quorum of the board attend, whether it be the planning conferences or the MTA conference. Those are not violations of the Open Meetings Act, and when you attend those conferences and you have a discussion about policy, uh, you know, let's say the short-term rental, which probably all of you are somewhat familiar with, you could have a quorum of our township board in a conference room discussing short-term rental at the same time that that short-term rental ordinance is being discussed at the township level. That's not a violation of the, um, Open Meetings Act, and there's case law to that effect. As long as it's in an educational workshop environment, you should be fine with that. The other exceptions, and I'll run through them pretty quickly, are disciplining a public, uh, employee. Public employees have the right to have that discipline occur in a closed session, it's at their discretion. So if you're going to discipline a public employee and it requires a board of trustees, doesn't really affect the planning commission, you have to put that employee on notice, and then they make the selection as to whether or not they're going to do it in an open or closed session. Collective bargaining negotiations are always discussed in closed session and permitted. Uh, considering the purchase of real estate, and what's interesting about this is, it is not for the purposes of the sale of real estate. So you can go into closed session to discuss purchasing real estate, you cannot go into closed session for the purposes of discussing selling real estate. And that can be very awkward, if you think that through, we're selling a piece of property, we have to do it in a public meeting, set the price, select the realtor, that's all in a public meeting. And then the purchase of property is up to the point that there's a purchase agreement, and then thereafter it has to occur in a public forum. The most used is really, uh, well, I'm sorry, the second one, there's a typo here, I apologize, it says pending legislation, it's actually supposed to be pending litigation. So we can always discuss with a board or commission in closed session, a pending lawsuit against the township or the commission. Um, reviewing an employment application where the applicant requests it be confidential can be in closed session. And then the most used one, uh, quite frankly, is to consider matters exempt from disc- uh, discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. That is primarily the attorney, um, opinions that are related to the commission and/or, um, the township board. It's under that exception that we can discuss those attorney opinions in closed session. So that's, uh, our coverage of the Open Meetings Act, and, um, now this is just ethics generally, and I, I'm sure you can all appreciate the fact that there's probably a lot more detail to both the Open Meetings Act. In fact, does anybody have any questions about the Open Meetings Act that you've run into or, or had some issues about whether or not it, it, it applies or doesn't apply? 'Cause this is supposed to be a little bit more of an informal kind of workshop.
I was just about to ask you, how do you want to handle questions?
Yeah, well, we, let's go, there's a break here, we've got the Open Meetings Act, and then we go to after. So do you have some questions about Open Meetings Act?
So I want to be real clear on this, if, uh, there was some kind of a band social or community or whatever, and four planning commission members, four boards, decided to sit at the same table, and we're just having friendly discussions and we're talking about planning issues. Is that acceptable?
Yes, as long as, with the caveat that you're not talking about planning issues that are active in front of the planning commission currently.
Does that mean we can talk about it all the way?
Uh, well, to be honest with you, you can, but, you know, it, it becomes a real gray area, right?
Understood.
So I gave the example of, uh, you know, short-term rental ordinance. If you're sitting around talking about what your position is with regard to short-term rental ordinance, and you know that that may be coming up in the future, that could be a problem. Um, so that's really, you know, the best practice is to stay away from that and not talk about something that might even, you know, in the future come in front of you. Um, for planning commission members, where it really gets difficult and gray is trying to select an issue that you might want to talk about in the future. So maybe nobody's ever talked about short-term rental, right? So you talk with a couple of different planning commission members about, hey, we should really, you know, work on a short-term rental ordinance. That is actually okay, because it's not deliberation of the underlying subjective issue. Scheduling matters are accept, are an exemption. So we can send out an email to a quorum of the board and try to get dates that work, and if you, you know, go back and forth in emails, that, those are not violations of the Open Meetings Act. And I would say the same for preliminary discussions of topics or agenda items, setting the agenda, those can be exempt. It's really when you talk about the substance of the issues, right? The one thing I should also point out on the Open Meetings Act is that a violation of the Open Meetings Act is actually a criminal action, and it's investigated by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. So I've actually, over the course of twenty-five years, I've probably gone to ten interviews of elected officials, uh, mostly elected officials, where there's been a complaint of the Open Meetings Act violation, and Oakland Sheriff has a separate division or department that conducts those investigations. I literally, I won't say who, but I just did one probably three months ago. And, and in that case, which happens quite regularly, there was an email sent from one board member to all seven board members, or all six other board members. Basically, all he was doing was seeking some input, right, from the other, what do you guys think about blank? And he received some input from different board members, and when that was made known to the public, he had a complaint, 'cause you can file, anybody can file a complaint about a Open Meetings Act violation. There was a complaint filed, and the Oakland Sheriff's took it up and investigated it and called him down for, uh, interview down at Pontiac, the sheriff's department. Um, they actually found that there probably was a violation, but decided not to prosecute him, which happens actually quite regularly. So it's important to know that those are criminal violations.
Another question, and maybe you'll get into this in ethics and just the investigation, just, you know, with the weight.
Yeah.
Communication between board members and planning commission members. Um, if, two different examples, a board member calls a planning commission member to, I'll say three different examples, to discuss a project, a board member calls a planning commission member to determine how their vote or going to influence that. A board member calls a planning commission member to determine how their vote or going to influence that vote. Or if a, let's say it's a project where the planning commission has recommended approval to the board. A board member calling planning commission member to try and get under a better understanding of their rationale.
So let me take it in reverse order. The last, getting a better understanding of the rationale completely appropriate, not a problem. The real issue of a board member, and the reason, and we did, we'll, we'll address it very slightly in one of the statutes. It says, when somebody has the power of appointment or approval of an appointment, they hold a superior position, and they should not use that position to influence another commissioner board. So if a board of member, the board of trustees member is contacting the planning commission for the purposes of trying to influence their decision, that would be inappropriate. Now stating their interpretation or seeking greater information or understanding why the planning commission did something, that's okay. But it's when you try to use your position as the, as the group that appoints a planning commission. So, you know, the most egregious would be, if you don't vote no on this project, I'm not going to support your reappointment. That would be, you know, obviously inappropriate. And then, so our rule of thumb is, is that there should be somewhat of a distance. You know, some places, and we do have a code of ethics here, it doesn't get into that much detail. But I've seen in other communities where they don't want a board of trustee members to even appear at planning commission meetings. So it's not required by the law, but the reason or the rationale for that is to keep away from what we just talked about, which is this appearance that you're trying to improperly influence the decision-making of the planning commission.
So I, I think I know the answer to this, but just to elaborate, a board member, a long-serving board member talking to a planning commission member, trying to explain the history of a particular piece of property, sounds like that would be appropriate.
That's fine. Yeah. Don't have a problem with that at all. One little caveat on that, and I'll just finish up, and I'll go to you, Sam, next, is ZBA is a little different. Yeah, so that interaction with the ZBA should be, I would say, zero, to be honest with you. The ZBA is really more of an independent body than the planning commission. So the protections for the ZBA go beyond that, and the influence on these, ZBA should really be pretty much zero. So I just want to point out there is a little bit of a difference between planning commission and ZBA. Sam, and then Jim?
I just have a question. So, and this has happened with me in the planning commission when I, you know, is if you, so if you want to make a comment, say it's from a resident, you're acting as a resident, or acting as a board member, whatever reason, you want to make a comment to the board.
Right.
To the planning commission about an agenda item. Not to go to the meeting, you know, send them an email, you know, tell them your thoughts on it, not try to sway the vote, just to give input on the project, you know. The hard part is sometimes is that by the time we find out about it as a board member, it's already on the agenda, the packet's already gone out. You don't have time to get that correspondence, you know, you don't have the time to get the, so, say, like, I've reviewed, when I wasn't on the board or on the board both, reviewed the planning commission package. By the time I review it, and I want to make comments, but I'm not on the planning commission, and I don't want to go there and try to influence it. But I just got the thing. So how do I communicate without it seeming like it's, I can't do it before the meeting and have it be part of the public noticed agenda or packet, because I just got the package and reviewed it, and that's already been dispersed, dispersed, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So what's the best way to, to give your input in that situation? Because if we, if we have a board member don't have the packet a week before it gets publicly noticed, so we would have time to respond, we would have time to... I don't have a problem with my comments being public, you know, public as part of the agenda, just like when a resident writes a letter, we make it part of, you know, these letters have been submitted, a public comment on that subject, you know?
Right.
Like, what's the, there was the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah. So what the law says is that when you're an elected official or appointed official, you still remain a resident, right? So if you're speaking as a resident, you have the right to do that, okay? Now, it gets, that's what the law says, okay? And I've seen it a thousand times where somebody comes up to the podium and clarifies, I'm speaking as a resident, not as a board of trustee member. That can, that can have some, I'm glad that they at least disclosed that that's what they were attempting to do, but it can get a little gray area, and it becomes a little difficult to determine whether that's true or not. That's number, that's my first point. My second point is, you're asking about how do I communicate? Well, a lot of it, you know, I don't have a problem with an email, a phone call. Coming to the podium at a public meeting, I still feel is a little bit, it's a bad look, all right? But communicating with individual commissioners is fine if the communication is consistent with what I just said, which is to give it perspective, to give, maybe you have some insight that the planning commission would be benefit from, or some experience that they would benefit from. But to tell them what to do or to advocate for a decision is where it gets to be inappropriate. So that's the best I can do. When and how that communication occurs is not the problem. It's the communication itself.
What, and I've been in that exact situation, where I just sent an email about an architectural feature or, you know, not, you know, of a way, a different option that could be looked at, just offering it. But it was at the last minute, an email. Should that email have just been read into record like we often do with personal emails? So that one of the, you know, people on the planning commission says, I did get a letter from Sam Morocco, and these were his suggestions that, you know, like I would have made if I came up to the podium, but that it's at least... Is it better than them secretly knowing what I sent them all in email? Because I would send it to one person, then maybe the chairman, you know, or someone else could. Because it could be a topic that Dave or Jim or Paul or, that has an opinion on, but they would just send it to the chairman and say, hey, could you read my comments into record? That'd be a little less...
It would be, yeah, it'd be less offensive to me than having the actual trustee come to the podium. I'm not saying that you cannot come to the podium. So I like that idea of communicating it and maybe requesting that it be read into the record. That, that is probably a better approach. I'm more interested in the substance of the statements.
Right.
And I would not, even if you were to communicate with them, this is where it gets so messy that sometimes it's best not to communicate, because you may go over the line unintentionally. But you certainly do not want to have a response. And if you're going to communicate with a planning commission member, I would actually put in, if it's in writing, I'd put in that email, I don't need a response. I'm just giving you the benefit of my insight, period. That would be a better approach. I think Jim's next, right?
Yeah, and I'm going to try and frame this with, within the context of the ethics piece. But you mentioned, you know, the ZBA is an autonomous body, and there should be zero, zero, zero influence, but with that, and I also understand that if an individual or a company comes before the ZBA, asks for certain, one or more variances, gets variances granted, the board's only recourse, in consideration of no communication, is to basically file suit against one zone ZBA. Now, that being said, if, if there's no ability for the board individually or collectively to offer an opinion, at the very least, how does the board establish standing in those cases?
Yeah, so filing lawsuit is an extreme position, right? And I think it's public knowledge, we've done that in this case, without talking about the substance of that case. It is still extreme. The way I would look at it is this. It's almost like the president appointing to the federal bench a judge. It's a lifetime appointment. The president does not then call up that judge in some case a year later and say, I want this outcome. That's kind of the role of the board of trustees. You appoint these people, they have this specific authority to decide things such as variances and/or interpretations, and they have to remain independent. The administration can have an input on variance requests, right? But board members should not be trying to influence ZBA members. That's, that's the problem. So the same issue with, with regard to any request, that, that's the way to handle it, all right? Filing a lawsuit is an extreme position, and you try to avoid that. But we do, in my opinion, have a right to enforce our ordinances if they're being openly violated by the ZBA. I think Paul was next, and then Carrie.
So I see him sort of, I think I understand the separation of those two things. And when it comes to the planning commission, I've never been to a planning commission meeting. And I think, the only person I've really ever communicated with before would have been Ron Ritchie, who was also a board member, although I did meet with Bill a couple of times, I think maybe prior to him getting appointed, when we had a couple of conversations. But it really wasn't about anything before them. Other than that, I don't think I've ever, we had a drink one time, but we didn't talk about anything on the planning commission, right? So, because for me, it's, it's very easy to not engage, even if I disagree, because I have the vote at the board, they can overturn whatever you've done. And so it's, it's much easier to just have it black and white, that I'm not going to communicate even if I hate what they've done, because when it comes here, I have a vote to say no, or say yes if they've said no, either way. And so it makes that easier for me to do that. My question on the ZBA would be, what if we had that case there, that thing before them, and I watched that from my phone outside, and I waited till they got to the end, and they, you know, made a motion, and they passed it, and I then walked in, or just before it went to vote, I came in when they were already done and said, look, I just want to go on record as, as objecting to such drastic changes, because without that, there's no standing.
Right. Well, actually, on the, on the legal standing, maybe I forgot to address it too. On the legal standing issue, the standing occurs before the vote's taken. So showing up at the meeting after the vote...
So I have to come in before, but, but again, if it's a situation like that, I'd rather get in trouble for someone saying you shouldn't have tried to influence them versus saying, well, now we're going to file a lawsuit, we have standing.
Right. Well, that's, that's part of the issue with this pending lawsuit, is if we're prohibited from that input, which in my opinion we are, then how do we create the standing for the board of trustees? That's what's going to be...
And it's from an ethical standpoint, we're prohibited, right?
Yes.
It's, it wouldn't be, it's not a criminal, though.
No, no.
So, all right, thank you.
I have a suggestion on that. I think sending something to the administration, which would be the department, to the planning director. Send an email, make a phone call, go visit, and then that can be documented. I was, you know, had a meeting with, and board member acts, likes, doesn't like, and then it's documented, and that could be recorded as something for the standing outside of attending and influencing and being present and speaking, talking ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see anything wrong with doing that, right, to contact, because all variances go through a review process of the township. So if you want to express your objections or your agreement with whatever the request is, giving it to the internal administration that is conducting the review, or even a third-party review, would be appropriate. The influence is trying to influence the ZBA. That's what the law is concerned with.
Yeah, but then it would be documented, and hopefully it would be before, because you saw the packet, where Sam even said sometimes with planning commission, he felt inhibited by attending and didn't want to attend. How could he get his thoughts across?
Right.
Send it to the administration.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, what better way than they can distribute it?
It certainly avoids the problem, the gray area, that he runs the risk of having gone too far. Yeah.
Isn't part of the difference between planning commission and ZBA is the ZBA is generally much more black and white. You've got to meet that hardship criteria. And it's pretty defined what that hardship is and how they meet it.
Well, it goes beyond that, but, I mean, I don't disagree with that, that it might be, it looked that way. But a ZBA is, it's a completely different body than the planning commission. I mean, it truly is a separate, almost quasi-judicial body, right? So they have limited authority, and for example, all of the planning commission decisions of substance, anyway, go to the board for approval. That doesn't obviously happen with the zoning board of appeals, and any disagreement with that goes immediately to the courts. So they are the final decision for the matters under which they have the authority for. So to that extent, they are really just two different bodies. Although they look the same, because the appointments are from the township board and so forth. Yeah.
I just want to be clear that I am allowed to attend a planning commission meeting.
Yes. It's not prohibited by law. What, what you run the risk of is making comments. Yes, right. So it's really about the substance of the comments that is the problem.
So I think that some of the communications better, the way we're talking about communicating through departments, through, that can be distributed and then recorded and all that, I think that, I think Chuck's working on us trying to get the elected officials some information about projects and things that are coming before, you know, before it's, we get it a couple of days before the meeting and have to go to the meeting. That would give us time to at least ask about it, go stop by the planning department, look at the plans before, you know, before they, you know, give us a little head start on anything that we may have issue with, you know? And then that, that just gives us, you know, gives us that ability to do that, where it's hard when we're all sitting on so many boards. And, you know, I have three township meetings just this week, you know, trying to catch the zoning board's agenda now that just came out while I have three other township meetings this week. And by the time I do it, it's like the meeting night, you know, it's, it's hard to do our due diligence and really take time to get into it, the way that it's set up currently, without the township board elected officials having any kind of pre-idea of what's coming down the pipe, you know? And if, and if we want to make, take an initiative to look further into it, you know what I mean? So I think Chuck is taking care of that stuff. So I think it's going to make a big difference for us.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Ethics, I mean, some of this stuff, I think, is pretty, speaks for itself. Obviously, the biggest concern are the conflicts, and these are just kind of a listing of what would generally be considered conflicts. A financial benefit from a decision, granting of special favors as a result of a decision. Your purpose is to try to avoid secrecy. That goes to that Open Meetings Act obligation to discuss these in public, and not to be influenced by favoritism or bias, right? So the whole idea here is, is that if you believe that any of these are impacting your decision-making, financial benefit, you know, there's a favoritism because you have a personal relationship with the person requesting, or, you know, there's a payback for a special favor, whatever the case may be. If that conflict exists, that's when you really need to start thinking through your ethical obligations, right? The second thing here, all right, and, and it's always primarily focused on personal gain, but I would give a very broad and general definition to personal gain. Personal gain is not just financial. A lot of people kind of focus on, well, I didn't gain anything financially. But if you're doing a favor for a friend, that is personal gain under the law. So it's, you should have a very broad definition of personal gain. And really, for all of these, we can go through them. I know that we want to keep this short on time. You know, the best thing to do is if you have any doubt, you disclose it, number one, right? You disclose it to your fellow board members, to your commissioners, you reach out to the supervisor to see whether or not maybe you need a legal opinion, or at least some advice as to whether or not there truly is a conflict. But what we're really talking about is you can step away from any decision by, first of all, disclosing, maybe asking to be recused, and you've avoided all of the issues that might be created. So it's a pretty simple fix, which is to disclose that you may have a conflict. And then they're, they're set in the vote, and then they're, they're sent down to- And of course, these are, and of course, these are, I don't even want to, because, I mean, I think everybody in the stands has been in the drift and voting in favor of a project, that's a problem, right? Now, it can get a, what, you confused by that? No. But, but it can get a little dicey, right? Because, for example, you know, some people here are involved in fundraisers. And we've, you get a check from a developer, could that be interpreted as influencing your decision as to the developer? The law says otherwise, and they make an exception for elected and fundraising because it's freedom of speech on behalf of the developer. So, that is not a violation to accept checks from a developer. Now, I know the township at one point did have in the past a policy that talked about that. I don't think it's no longer in place. Is that, do you know, Carrie, or no?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, okay. In any event, it's not, it's not enforceable, and you cannot restrict the developer or anybody else from contributing to a political campaign. That's what the law says in that regard. But, any other favor by somebody who is, and I won't, I don't want to pick on developers, anybody that might have a matter in front of a commission or a board, has to be thought about, right? And, and if you're, I don't care if it's a, a ride, you know, downtown for a concert or something, you have to think about that. Does that influence, because the focus is, does it influence your vote when that matter comes in front of you? All right. There are, in addition to just the general standards for what could be perceived as a conflict, there are four specific statutes, and there's actually more than this. Campaign Finance Act could easily be part of this as well, because it does involve ethics as well. But these are the four acts that we deal with whenever there's an allegation that there has been a violation of ethics, and we can just run through them. I'll let you know, you can look at these, most of these acts are what, 60, 70 years old already? So, some of them are outdated. There's a financial component that we can go over here of $250 where the act applies, and under $250 it doesn't. And that's an act that was written back in 1973. So, is that still, you know, the, the cutoff? You know, who knows? But that's what the act is. So, the first one is the standards of conduct of a public official and/or an employee. These are the basic obligations of a public official, and it applies to all of the township employees as well. Divulging, you should not be divulging confidential information to unauthorized people. So, that's the primary issue, is discussions in closed session, or any matters that are confidential to the commission or the board, you should not be discussing them with anybody outside of an authorized individual. And that typically is your fellow commissioners or board members and/or any staff or consultants that are involved in that process. So, if you're talking particularly in closed session about a matter, if you receive a confidential legal opinion, and you disclose the content of that closed session and/or the confidential legal opinion, again, this is a violation of this act. And that's what they're talking about. Getting back to the whole idea of when you talk in public, if it is as a resident because of some issue that we just talked about when you're speaking as a resident, but if you give the appearance that you're talking in your official capacity as a trustee, and it's really for a personal matter, then that again is a violation of this act. And then, of course, improper utilization of governmental resources. This is again kind of tied in with Campaign Finance Act, that if you use your resources, it's primarily for the elected official, but if you use your resources as a trustee for the purposes of political gain, that is a violation of the Campaign Finance Act. But any use of governmental resources, whether it be your email, your official capacity, or what, whatever, must be for the benefit of the township in this case. Again, receiving gifts of influence. This particular act, some of these acts overlap, and so I don't want to get too bogged down because a lot of them say the same things. The key to all of this is receiving a gift for the purposes of being influenced as to a decision. That's what the key is in terms of actually violating these acts. And then the, the final one is having outside interests that would influence your decision as well. Next paragraph, yeah, yeah.
So, social media?
Yes.
How, where does the line get drawn between a, anyone in this room, elected or whatnot, member, posting comments, positive or negative? How does that get delineated between there being a resident, speaking with the residence voice versus a official voice, and how is that supposed to be determined?
Yeah. So, there's a couple we just covered. If, if those comments are involved in disclosure of confidential information, or information that you gained as a result of sitting on a board or a commission that the general resident would not have, then that could be a problem. And if you're disclosing that on social media, that could be a problem. Now, if you just have a, a general objection to, you know, and most of this in planning commission and board members, it evolves developments or the passionate issues. You have a general objection to any new hotels in the township, whatever the case may be. Not a problem with expressing that on social media, but it is a problem to disclose confident, confidential information that's being discussed by the board. That would be my biggest concern about that.
So, any comment made that is not confidential is fine?
Yes.
That's what I just heard you say?
Yes, yes.
Positive or negative?
Well, there, I, let me take that back.
Ode to or not ode to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Now, there, we have a code of ethics-
Influence on a planning commission or on the board?
Yeah, I'm gonna, okay, a couple of things. First of all, there are a couple of other things that we have to be aware of. There's protections for employees that we have to be aware of as well. So, there could be other restrictions on board members and/or commissioners as it relates to their function as potential supervisors of employees. So, that's a whole other realm. I'm not going to say it's best practices, but your question is, is it a violation of the statutes or the criminal laws? And I would say, no, it's not a violation. But is it best practice? That depends upon what's being said. So, if you're criticizing a board or commission that you're sitting on, that is not the way to do it, in my opinion. And our code of ethics somewhat addresses that, that you're supposed to respect the decisions made by the commission or board that you sit on, because that's, that's the best practice. You may disagree with it, you can vehemently, from the podium or from your seat, disagree with the rest of the board's decision, but to attack the board either on personal grounds or for grounds that you believe influenced the decision is not appropriate, not best practice. Is it a violation of a statute? Probably not, yeah. Okay. Okay, so this is just the specifics of this particular act. Basically, there, what it says is, is that you should recuse yourself when you're in positions that create a conflict. There are some exceptions here. If a quorum is not met, the statute goes into a long detail of even if you have a conflict, if you cannot get a quorum of the board, you could participate in the vote. And I would only say in that circumstance, it's a, it's a convoluted, I've been through this a couple of times. You might need a little bit of help from us to interpret whether or not you should. Now, generally, because it's a quorum issue, my recommendation would be, if you don't have a quorum and you believe that you have a conflict, then you need to move that matter to the next meeting and not even try to get through it in this statute. Again, on this particular statute, it does not apply to part-time public officers. What's interesting about this, I've had this case a couple of times, trustees. And, and I'll, and I'll just point out, this, this act actually deals with, like, for example, purchasing assets from the township, right? So, you're, you're a public elected official or even a planning commission member, and the DPW is selling all of its, you know, lawnmowers. In order for you to buy that lawnmower from the township, this act lays out all of the requirements that you're required to do. And it's a notice requirement, and there's a couple of other requirements. It doesn't apply to part-time public officials, which trustees technically are usually considered part-time public officials. And the only reason why I bring this up is, we had a public official trustee who purchased property from the township, and it was deemed to be okay-
Not here.
Is basically what it was.
Not, not in Independence?
Not in Independence, no, no. But, again, when, you know, I think, and, and I know that Paul in the past has sold things on eBay, right? On a public auction.
Yeah, and so I'll just-
Yeah.
We talked about it at a board meeting that, because I think a couple of times, I think, I think Pat Kittle bought a, a little light stand thing or something that we put on eBay because it was going to be gotten rid of. But, but it's always been done through the bidding process, and we've talked about it at board meetings when that's happened. So, I, I, I'm guessing we're in better shape if it's at a public auction where anyone can bid on it.
Yeah, that, that provides a level of protection-
Yeah.
That this statute is really trying to-
I think it's pretty rare. I don't know that there's many other cases-
Yeah.
Where I've, where it's, again, we've been using eBay since 2013, so.
Right. So, it gets a little, and I'm not, I don't know anything about that particular incident, but I, just to keep your-
It was $10, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, on this one, this statute requires that it be above $250 for it to even apply. But I think what the issue is, is that, for example, I don't care what the actual item is that you're purchasing. It would appear that, okay, hey, I, I'm bidding or I'm, you know, because sometimes they have auctions that are live, right there. I'm, I'm out bidding somebody else. But what you have to understand is because you're a trustee, you may have some personal inside knowledge that the other people don't have, which gives you a benefit. Hey, I know that that truck is a really good truck because it was never used or whatever the case may be. Or the DPW director told me that's a great truck, right? Or we just replaced the engine just a month ago. Any kind of information like that, it's just like insider trading. If it can be shown that you use that information to your benefit, then you are technically in violation of this act. Okay? This act primarily deals with, it, it references contracts, but contracts are very broadly interpreted under this act, and it does, you know, cover things such as buying assets from the township. So, I'll move on from that. Okay, so, again, this is, this gets more into the detail of the actual act. I can only tell you this, is that if, for example, you do want to purchase or enter into a service contract with the township, whether you be a commissioner, a public employee, or a board member, or if you want to purchase property or a truck from the township, there's a whole list of things to disclose, and it actually requires a disclosure to the Board of Trustees seven days in advance of the actual transaction. And so, there's a process there. We don't need to go into it all. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that if you enter into a contract or your company enters into a contract with the township, you need to disclose it. If you're buying or selling, or I'm sorry, purchasing an asset from the township, you need to disclose it. And then it would go through the process that's required under the statute. We don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this. This is the Incompatibility of Officers Act, which basically says you cannot hold two positions that are incompatible. They generally are two public positions, but, you know, for example, like, this comes up a lot of times where an employee attempts to run for, you know, the actual elected body. That can be incompatible. We had a case right here, it's not a significant case, but a case right here in Clarkston, where one of the assistant football coaches ran and was actually elected to the school board. I don't know if you guys remember that. But it was determined by the courts that it was incompatible, and he had to decide one way or another. Couldn't be the assistant football coach as well as sit on the school board. That's what this act applies to. So, it's rare that we run into problems with that. Won't spend a lot of time with that one. Okay, the final portion of all this is what the common law is. So, basically, all laws are broken down into two things. One, are the statutes that the legislature pass, and then what we refer to as the common law. And the common law is basically judge-made law, right? And it's developed over the case, over the, the case law and the decisions of actual lawsuits and/or criminal prosecutions. The reason why that's important is there's no set definition of what is a conflict. And it falls into the categories of these three categories. Malfeasance, which is the doing of a wrongful act. Misfeasance, which is doing a lawful act in a wrongful manner, so that would be more like negligence. And then non-feasance, which is the failure to perform duties of an office, the requirements of an office. Those are the three categories. The only thing that I would say about this is particularly with regard to the first one, malfeasance, the doing of a wrongful act, in the common law can result in criminal prosecution, can result in significant fines and penalties. We'll take a little quick look at them at the next slide. But it is really based upon the circumstances of the actual incident, right? So, it's not like in the statutes where they spell out what you can and can't do. The common law is always evolving. It's always, it's, it's new based upon the cases that are decided, right? So, and, and the point is, is that if you're found to have, under the common law, violated conflict of interest or a public trust issue, it can lead to criminal prosecution, including felonies. It can lead to fines, which the common law has been up 500 to $10,000. And then, of course, there's the political fallout and the lack of public trust. And the, in the case of elected officials, the removal from office. I would just point out too, that I think the planning commission may be aware of this, that our ordinances allow planning commission members to be removed for the three bases that we just talked about as well, malfeasance, misfeasance, and non-feasance. So, that kind of concludes it. Took a little bit, about an hour, but really, I, I thought that the purpose too was to have a discussion or a question. So, if there's anything more, I'm open. Yeah, Dave?
Question, you mentioned the, that you can be removed for those three items from the planning commission. What about the ZBA?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Who brings that forth? Is it the actual commission that does it? So, on the planning commission, would it be the planning commission or would the-
Board of Trustees.
Do it? And does the board do it for the ZBA, or does the ZBA do it generally since they're kind of autonomous?
No, the board, the Board of Trustees would do it.
Always.
Yes, right. It's a, it's a high bar to prove, but it would be the Board of Trustees, yes.
And would we have a closed session prior to discuss whether or not we believe we would want to go public with the accusation of any of those three things as part of the removal?
Yeah, you would only have a closed session if you, in that case, the only one that I can think of, if you want an attorney opinion as to what your rights are or what the standards are for removal. So, we could have a closed session about that for the purposes of discussing the law, and then the basis for the removal would be in public. And of course, I think everybody understands there's no decisions that are to be made in closed session, right? There's a couple of exceptions to that, you know, the discipline of an employee, if that was occurring in closed session. But there's no votes in closed session, there's no final decisions made in closed session.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think this was a, a great opportunity to get started with this. But I do think in the, in the near future, we should have a joint session where we actually talk about the master plan and just sort of some open dialogue about the direction of the township. So, we sort of get a feel for, for how everyone feels about this stuff that's in public. And we did something like this about six or seven years ago. And I thought there was a lot of value in that, and we've got a lot of new people. So, I'd love to see that set up in the, in the near future.
Support.
I don't think there will be a motion on that.
I'm making a motion to expedite that thought and supporting the thought as presented. And I do think that, well, we've been all talking about it.
Yeah, yep.
I think we should do it sooner than later-
Yep.
As more people are interested in the township. So, I think it's fair, it's fair to the developers too to have an understanding of our goals and objectives, you know?
You mentioned discuss the master plan. Do you want to discuss it before the current draft is adopted, or is it just more of a, kind of a factual thing?
I'll leave that to the, out of the administration.
I expect, I'll find out tomorrow night. I expect we'll be forwarding it within the next couple of months for board approval, is why I ask.
on, is understanding and flowing out the process, and every step that goes along with it, what happens at this step, can it go this way or that way, so on and so forth, all, with a couple of different intentions, but one is to give more insight to, while there are plenty of opportunities to get insight, but maybe more, make it more of a, a push than a pull type situation, where the boards can, whether we're talking about the planning commission or the Board of Trustees, have an opportunity to see this as it progresses, right? I mean, nothing's worse than, I think, that, than coming to, you know, a, a point where the planning commission is dealing with something, and all of a sudden, the board, for whatever reason, is just now finding out about it. There needs to be checkpoints in place before those things that are signed off and said, okay, yes, we, we as a board know this because we had ex, the liaison or a informal pre-meeting, and those individuals have signed off, and therefore, that communication there. I think a lot of the problems that I'm starting to identify is the fact that there is not a formal structure to do that. There are opportunities, but there's a difference between an opportunity and a formal structure. And what I mean by that is, you have the opportunity to come to this, if you're on the planning team, but you're not required to come. A formal thing is, okay, we're going to have it, and if you're not there, you're going to sign off and explain why you're not there if you're on the planning team. So there's that more level of accountability, and therefore, I believe if you're measuring it, people will only respect what you inspect. So we're going to clarify those a little bit more, formalize it, and have those different processes, which I think is going to start identifying some of these issues that we're talking about. As far as it relates to pre or post the master plan being adopted, we're pretty far down, down that road already, right? And so, I mean, you know, there's, everybody has an opportunity to express that. Will we have everything in place, will, and I say we, Brian and I have everything in place prior that time? I'm not 100% sure, so I'm not willing to commit at this point in time, it will be pre, but, I mean, definitely going forward, there is going to be a structure in place to deal with these things, so they're a little bit less surprise. And it also goes as far as the, the options, or the things that go to the ZVA, you know, that should, again, it's the, the last possible step, and it's almost an extreme step all across the board, right? And, and even from the applicant side. So the idea is, if we have, if we can give better guidance, and I look at it kind of like the Federal Reserve, right? Federal Reserve gives guidance on what it's going to do. Corporations give guidance on what they're going to do before they actually go through and talk about their earnings and all that. We need to have those guidance conversations, and I think if we do that, a lot of the things that we're, the issues I've seen over the last year or so, I think they start to, they won't go away completely, but they'll start to diminish, and I think it becomes much more manageable. I think the public will be more informed, we'll be more informed, and the more informed we are, the more the public's informed, it just feeds on itself and it gives for a better scenario. And our goal, just by the way, Brian and I's goal is, to have this all done by the end of this month, the, the structure in place. Other questions or comments? Okay, I do have one other thing, we do have a form here that I would like you guys to sign, it's really just going through and saying, basically, yes, I heard it, I accept it, I, we're all on the same page, and we're going to go through and sign it. I need you to, there's one for the planning commission, one for the Board of Trustees, Carrie's going to be the, obviously, the agent of record, and so when you sign it, please just hand it back to her so she can get it on the, checked off the list. Anyway, I'd like you to do it before you leave, right? Because we know, we all get busy.
May I help my ass?
Yeah. So you can do that one out of this one.
Dan, could you give me a heads up on this document if you think it's, you know, good?
So this is, this is the one we passed a while back that we did.
Yeah, yeah.
That's part of the code of ethics.
Yeah, this is the code of ethics, it's the same one, you know.
This was put in place by the board in '16 originally.
So this is the same one we talked about before.
Any other trustees that way?
I'll take one more.
My daughter's birthday.
He's going to let you in?
Yeah.
The doors aren't locked, the west door's not locked, where do you need to go?
This is extra?
Carrie needs that.
Oh, Carrie.
Oh, you're going to that one?
Yeah. If you guys, if you pass back around.
Could you, could you email copies of this to everyone? I don't mean copies of these, it's just what the, shall we have a copy for us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Now, in the case of Sam with the board and the planning commission, do you want him to do one for the planning commission as well?
Are they that different? I did notice that there was two, and I didn't read the planning commission, because I'm not on the planning commission, I didn't read it.
The board has, because that, that got adopted by the board, you have new requirements and board members for the planning commission.
That probably supersede, the planning probably more evolved as a trustee.
Yeah, that's assigned.
Is this assigned?
Wouldn't it supersede the planning? Do they have a meeting of members?
You don't ask.
What's that? Do you think I need to sign one for the planning commission, too, or does the board want to supersede?
Well, you're acting as the cap of the board as a planning commission.
That's true, he's the liaison.
Still a board member first.
Anybody else not get theirs turned in, so I can get up and let upstairs and let Joe, oh, as soon as we adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye's have it, be in adjourned. Thank you, everybody.